I knew I knew. Hi Cathy, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. Do I know?
Jerry Edubor.
Oh, Jerry. Heck yeah.
A-A-T-H-Y-B-U-R-S-K. Are we going?
We are.
Okay, let's look at the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, we will now call this meeting to order. Acknowledge the roll call and acknowledge visitors. Hello?
Hello.
Mr. Halverson. We'll move on to the agenda approval. I will ask for motion to approve the agenda as you see and the corrections up in the corner for the additions.
The motion approved the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Hickerson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Casey Heinz. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Open forum. I did, I did receive an email from one of our staff members. You have it Cathy, that you can read it?
Yeah.
And I would ask Cathy to read that. Any other people got any open forum from any other?
Do you want to take Mr. Halverson's first?
Yeah, Mr. Halverson, you go ahead.
I need to get by that.
Yes, why not?
First of all, I want to say that I'm happy that they're proposing we have a spring season. Don't want to complain too much or they might take that away from us. But at the same time, I'm very disturbed and feel that we're discriminated against very bad as an outstate school to play football in March 15th. Seems like almost an impossibility where the metro schools have domes and artificial turf and all that sort of thing. And you know, we're in an age of discrimination and I don't think they're considering us very much. As it's going to be now, there's going to be zero activities for boys as well. Won't be any. Somebody said, well, you can put cross country. I said, we don't have cross country. And I feel that if that were reversed, so there were zero activities for girls, there would be a stink about it. With the title, it's Title IX, I'm not sure if that's the name of it or not, but you know, I'm disappointed with that too. So we have no activity. Is anyone here on the board for the state high school league or vote a meeting for that?
No.
Nobody does, okay. Because I tried to find, you know, figure out who's on the board and stuff and all that. And we can't find anything much, but it's too late now anyway, but I hope we do have a spring season, but they're not considering us very much at all for that. The other thing, the back to the tower thing. My kids were really disappointed. They protested back to the tower by not coming. Because we couldn't be afraid. And there wasn't any presence at the school there. And even people that are from the school. And I think that, you know, when we come down to having a bullet issue later, that's going to show up. And I realize all the problems there would have been with, you know, the virus and everything that's going around to have people there, but you know, the, the school is a big part of the community. And the bottom line is, without the community, there isn't going to be a school. Because you know, if we ask for them to vote for an increase or something or another, they're going to say, you know, you need to support the community as well, and maybe support the school. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Halverson.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, could I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
Coach Halverson, so, so Coach Halverson, will you be practicing during the fall season? So will there be football practice with our, with our athletes during, during the fall?
We have no direction yet.
Okay.
High school leagues. They say that in their minutes and stuff that it's going to be, but we can't go ahead with anything until we have some direction as to if we can work ads or what we can do week and how many days a week be able to do it? And what other sports are going to be practicing during fall?
What has come my way through, through our new AD is that the fall practice can be opened up for volleyball and football. But again, I have not seen any of the parameters with it, but looking at practicing in the fall, the actual competitive season in the spring is the only thing that I've received as far as.
They're already hedging on the safety of playing football on the road. I hope they're not just putting us off for a while, you know. Because I think if they're doing that, there'd be a lot more protest about it. And we're continuing with our Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday thing outside until we get some direction on what we can do.
Good, and that's been going well?
Until they found out there was no season, it's windowsill, with the number of kids involved. And it's hard to blame them for that. You know, but we're trying to keep their interest in it.
Thank you. And here is the open forum from Tricia Kotsmit.
Okay.
It is important for the board members and our community to know how hard our administration and staff are working to make this school year a success for our students, families and community. Many, many hours of behind the scenes meetings, reading, collaborating and planning have been going on since the beginning of July for the 2020 school year. I am proud to be a part of Olavee's stack and working with such dedicated educational professionals. From transportation to food service custodial, support staff and certified teachers, I have witnessed these groups coming together to brainstorm and plan the best educational experience for our community. Many of these plans, procedures and protocols are still in the planning stage awaiting the green light. Therefore, as a teacher trying to plan for school this fall and from a parent's perspective, I urge our administration and board members to approve the major decisions as soon as possible for this fall. For example, not just in person or hybrid, but if we are looking at different start times for high school and/or elementary, deciding those key items now and starting off the year in a way where we would have minimal changes if hybrid is needed. It is easier to start with new procedures than to change in late September or October, et cetera. A huge part of our planning is the schedule as it pertains to pre-K through 12th grade. Also, if I were a parent in our district trying to decide what is best for my family, I would need to know what the plan is so I can make the best decision for my children and family. The sooner Olavee knows which students will be returning in person or choosing distance learning, the sooner we as teachers can plan a successful learning plan. Thank you, Tricia Kotsmit.
Thanks Cathy. Anybody else got anything from any other citizens? No? Okay. All right, anybody else on open forum? Hearing none, we'll move on to a number five, which is Kanabik County Public Health Information given to us by... Introduce yourself, please.
I am Cathy Hersky and I am the Director at Kanabik County Community Health. And I'm not quite sure what direction you wanted me to go with this, so I'm just going to speak to how we will be here to support you in the different models and how we'll help hopefully provide information for you to make those decisions. And yep, it would be nice if we could say it's going to be this. And we can say that, but a week down the road, it might be different. That's just kind of how the numbers are. So the state has asked you to prepare for the three different models and it has provided some parameters for, and they're using a case rate, cases per 10,000, and they've provided that formula. So for example, in the last 14 days, we have had 14 cases. We've had a spike. So if we look at what the case rate would be today for the last 14 days, it's damn near nine. It's 8.64. However, part of what we're going to do for the school districts in our community is to provide you some more information about those numbers. Just because we've had 14, I would not say that you would need to go away from the in-person because two of those might have a little bit of impact, impact on the school. The rest of them, it's a breakout, it's not connected, it's not going to affect the school numbers. So we can't just take that number and say, here's the decision. It falls here in the plot, so you have to move to hybrid. We're able to look at every single individual that tests positive, see what the risk might be to the school. So that is what we will do and my preparedness coordinator Kate is in constant communication with Cathy and the school nurse as well as administration and Mora. So that is what we will do and again, you can't just look at that number alone because it might be a, an outbreak at a work site or something and they don't have any connection to the school.
So you would, you would give us the direction?
We will give you the information and help you to sift through it and make that decision.
Okay.
The, so we get all of the positives, we're able, we call them right away and say, hey, you, we understand you tested positive. We do the investigation as to, do you have school age children or are, is it a school age child? Is it a parent? Is it a staff? Is it just a general community member? What we don't want to see is that number of unknown community transmission going up. So unfortunately, activities like back to the tower, big gatherings like that, that's where you hear. Well, I don't know where I got it, I was here, here or here, could have been any of those places. And then we know community transmission is there and higher and that's when we would have to probably switch to a different model because we can't pinpoint it to you had contact with a positive case. So from the public health perspective, we will look at that, we'll look at each case, see if we can determine, was it due to a known contact? Was it due to a workplace that has no bearing on the school and we'll provide that information. The other things we will continue to do is to provide community education and messaging about containing the spread. So the biggest things, mask wearing, proper mask wearing, hygiene, distance. So if you can stay six feet, that's best. Not all schools are able to do that, I think you guys are in a probably better position than most just because of your size. So we will do that, we will provide, we can do combined letters to parents because what every single parent and child does today will affect what happens in a week or two. You know, if they're kind of running around to here or there and don't know who they've been around, that could cause an issue, so we want to make sure that that message is there. The other thing is flu season, because seasonal flu will still come and that usually is right around Thanksgiving or a little bit after where that picks up. It's really to, again, push vaccination because we don't need flu on top of coronavirus. And they do, even though Corona is not flu, the symptoms are similar. And if we know it's the flu, it's a little different story, but we probably aren't going to know. So we will be promoting those vaccinations. I know you've had a company come in and provide, so I would promote that with your staff and we will hopefully do some clinics as well and promote that because we do not need that on top of coronavirus. Sir, anything else you really wanted me to talk about Cathy?
Just answering any questions that possibly board members might have for us tonight?
Sure, I'll start. And I may or may not have those answers.
Right, and the Minnesota, the COVID dashboard, it does have the school statistics where it does break out by every county on like what goes, you know, the blocks.
The 14 days.
Correct. I did notice that like the state is using our number at 1.6.
1.62, yep.
Right, and then I heard today from Cathy that we're using 1.600, we're using a different, we're using a different number.
1.6004, to get the actual, and that's the same thing really.
The 2018 census data is what they're using and my 1.62 is probably a different year.
Correct.
And that's what Kate sent you, 1.6004.
Yes, correct.
So which number are we using? Is there going to be a place where the general public can see that? Like this is the number that the county is using, so if they are keeping track of us, that way is.
Well, again, on that dashboard, that's the state. So I can tell you they are using the 2018 census data or estimated.
Right.
And so if that's 1.6004, like Kate said, that is what we will use.
Okay, is that going to be on like the counties?
We are trying to figure out how to put it on the county, but my fear is people will go that and see that and go when either they should or they shouldn't because you can't just look at that number alone.
Right.
For people who love data and we're going to put something out there, but I'm trying to figure out how I put a disclaimer out there that says, you can't just look at this.
Right.
And maybe it's that simple, but, but yeah, we're hoping to put something on the website.
Now, if, if cases go up, does that number change then? Is it, is that a constantly changing number?
The 1.6?
Yeah.
No, that is your county population divided by 10,000.
Oh, okay, I got it, I got it.
Got it, around $16,600 something people in the county.
Yeah, that's the constant.
Right.
Every 14 days will have a different.
Yeah.
And you divide the 14 day number by that 1.6.
004, I got it.
To get your rate for 10,000.
But the key point I want to get is that if there is something that the county is aware of, of course, you're going to let the school district know as soon as possible and we react as soon as possible.
Yep.
Correct?
Absolutely.
All right.
How does, like if we do have to switch modeling, let's say we're on that, that last day, that 14th day and we go over, what is that, our magic number is like 16?
Or to go to height, well, zero to nine is in person and then the next level is tend to whatever.
It's like 16 cases, I guess, is what it comes out to. Now, if we hit that threshold and we have to switch to a different modeling, how long do we stay in that different?
And again, my hope would be, we're going to see that trend coming and get you thinking about that. Hey, we're inching up onto that, so what is your trigger point going to be? Because, just because it's 16 again, you kind of have to look at a few more days of data and see if it's with just a fluke or because it can.
That's your, but that's your thing.
That's our thing to let you know and keep track of that. You know, and overall, the decision is the state's. If it gets to be so bad, the state will just automatically say, hey, everybody's going back to distance learning, distance learning. But we hope to provide you with enough information early enough to be able to look and plan so that you don't have to do, you know, on a Friday and then Monday bam, you're right. You'll have a week's time or something looking at a trend.
Okay.
Cathy?
Do, no, go ahead.
I was going to ask, I know that a lot of communities have influxes during like Memorial Weekend, Fourth of July. We've got Labor Day and our school season starts just after. Just after that, we will start.
Again, that messaging of what you do today will affect two weeks. And I would just encourage you to, if you're putting anything out to the parents, that you need to be careful who you're with, what you're doing, for how long. Outside gatherings with people you hang out with all the time are probably okay. But if you're planning to go to somewhere else with people you don't know and don't normally hang out with, you probably shouldn't do that because it, it could bring it back here and shut you down.
So in other words, follow the guidelines that we've been following lately, the best you can. Wear your mask, wear your stuff, do your stuff, social distancing when you can, I get it.
Yep.
And I think all parents get it by this time.
However, they don't all abide by it.
Well.
Most of them, or not most, there is, there are some that don't believe it's a problem, that it's conspiracy, it's, but it's, it's here and it's real.
In that, in that vein, we did take a survey and there was a lot of commentary about people not wanting their child to wear a mask or even to have their temperature taken. Maybe just elaborate on the importance of that.
Well, that's going to be a, a school today with the discussion we had with Mora, they're going zero tolerance. You're going to have some special needs kids that can't wear them and then you'll need to deal with that. That's your job to come up with those policies and procedures, but they say if you don't want to wear a mask, stay home. Is what Mora is saying. That's, that's right now their stance.
In the superintendent call last Thursday, some of the publications had said that we weren't going to be able to discipline students for not wearing masks, but that was reversed. And so on Thursday, they shared that the wearing or non-wearing of a mask should fall under our discipline ladder just like all other situations where, where students aren't doing, you know, what they're supposed to be doing. But what they shared is if you have a family that just really will not, or does not want their children to be wearing masks, then as a school district, we should suggest that they go into distance learning.
Yeah.
And there's always another choice, always another choice for that.
How about staff members? Don't want to, what's, what's our, what's our position with staff members? May not want to.
Our staff, we must be wearing the masks, I mean, that's, it's state compliance. Just like we are governed by many other state compliance situations. So we need to, to follow the state statutes.
So if we're offering students the opportunity to do distance learning because they don't want to wear masks and their families don't agree with that, are we offering the same to our teaching staff? How would that work?
The, the teaching staff, it's a little bit different.
Okay.
It's a little different and you know, and they're under contracts with us and so it's a little different. This has not been brought up at all in any discussion with our, with our staff. As far as people saying that, that they aren't, aren't willing or aren't wanting, that hasn't, hasn't even been suggested.
Nobody wants to wear a mask. But the requirement in the school district, and I know for the food service, because I just know my wife is part of that, she has to wear a mask. And that's just the way it is or you can't come to work. Or you don't have a job, you know what I mean? But I understand that they're concerned, but that's the requirement we have here as a school district and, and the state of Minnesota.
Mr. Chair, could I, could I ask a question of her?
Go ahead.
Is there a distinction between the seasonal flu and the virus?
Yeah.
I mean, there are very good distinctions.
You mean in the way of symptoms, how do we know what's what? Only with the, the testing?
Okay.
You can only tell with the testing right now.
So what happens if we get a bunch of people with a temperature?
You got to send them home. I mean, there's a whole bunch of guidance that the state has had and they stay home for 10 days, possibly 24 days if they have a, well, if you have a student. Because.
24 days?
Could be, yeah, because you have the 10 days for the person who tests positive and then their contacts, if they're in the same household, that contact has to stay 14 beyond that 10.
How about, how about teachers that may have had contact? So, I mean, you know.
I opened up a big can there, I don't.
Well, I, I was going to ask that once we got down to this. Because no matter what our number ends up being, we might have to go to distance learning at some point in time anyway. Because we don't have enough staff to get the kids here on the bus, teach the kids here, you know, feed the kids here. You, you know, if, if staff members and, and kids that come in contact with, with a family, I mean, let's say it was a family of three, one in high school, one in middle school, one in grade school. I put out an awful lot of people. You know?
Right, depending on if the children themselves have contracted the virus or if they've been exposed to the virus by their, by, by parents or other group. And this, this happens to be the email that came from, from Kate from Kanabik County today and I really like this visual because here it shows down, the, the center here, this is if it's a positive case by a parent. Okay, so a parent has the, the positive case. Okay, so then the contact would be the children and they would need to go into self-quarantine. And then depending on if the students, of what kind of, you know, contact they had with anybody else in the class. But if the students don't test positive, then it's not, it's not going to be where it's going to wipe out a whole class like right now. And so by doing the self-quarantining, then it, the latter just, you know, it just becomes more and more prevalent. But that, all that guidance will come from our Kanabik County and it will also come from, from the state. And the idea of, Kate, let's say something happens where we have, let's use in a third grade classroom. A third grade classroom needs to be self-quarantined. Okay, so the whole class goes out, including the teacher. And then the whole class is in distance learning with the teacher through the Google meets, through the, the Google Classroom platform. So class is still going on with that teacher and with the students, but just in a different, in a different way. Now, it will be different if, if a teacher contracts the virus because then we would have to have a substitute teacher. The teacher would not be healthy enough in, in many cases, I, I would think, to, to feel, to feel able to teach. And so we'll just have to, you know, basically take those situations as, as they come. But I just want to, you know, share kudos for Kanabik County because Cathy and Kate have been absolutely wonderful in giving us really day-to-day information. And I have also reached out to Mille Lacs County and to Isanti County because in our school district, we have families in both those as well. But this document, you may have seen this, and this document is all of the counties in, in the state. So this one happened to be back on the last, the last range of collection was 75 through 718. And at that time, Isanti was 5.13, Kanabik was 5.00 and Mille Lacs was 5.05. Now, in talking with the other counties, the public health directors or, or lead people there, they had shared with me that this reporting is only being done weekly. That this reporting that's coming from the state, when they do the next 14 day calculation, is coming out on Thursdays. So I think that's going to be important for us to, to discuss too. I mean, do we wait for this report and we use the numbers that are on this because that's the information we're getting from Mille Lacs and Isanti counties? Or do we go by, you know, individual date and if Kanabik County, we have a spike and it puts us over that 10, then I would need to get exact information, which I don't, I, I didn't get the sense that that would be, that would be presented to us from the other two counties. So I don't know Cathy, what the answer is for that because, you know, you're, you're doing, you're, you're giving us daily information and that is so, so beneficial in my mind.
And there is a newer one out that ended last Thursday, August 6th, but.
Right.
That, and that's why we, you can't see a trend in two weeks. I mean, you see a trend tomorrow or even the next day possibly. So that's why we want to make sure to be giving you that information as we see it so that you don't have to shutter down the next day. You have time to be, all right, it's creeping up, be thinking about the hybrid, how are you going to do it? And then that would hopefully provide you with more opportunity to, to do it really well.
Right.
Our first case didn't start until like May 1st, so we only have three months for the data for Kanabik County. But, and it took, what, 12 weeks to get 20 cases?
And then it took a week to get another 14.
Right.
But they are linked and not a risk to the school.
Right.
Right.
For the most part. There's a couple that could, but.
Could you, not a lot of people have gone through the whole contact tracing questionnaire, so like, I don't know, would you be one to maybe familiarize our board members on how that works and what questions?
Well, I can give you general because I don't actually do it, I have other staff that do that. But basically, they call, they're going to ask, where have you been the last 14 days? And most importantly, the last two days before you became symptomatic. And it's different if they tested and didn't know they had, but. So we're going to ask them that, we're going to ask them symptoms, we're going to ask them who they had contact with, where were they? And we hope, and this is another message we want to get out to everybody, is when we call, please be honest about that information. Don't, you know, if you happen to go to, I don't know if it's a parent to a bar or something, don't be embarrassed. Just tell us the truth, you know, and give us that information so we can call the contacts. Most of the time, the people have been really good and have already communicated with the people they were in contact with. There's been backyard barbecues, there's been some bars, you know, things are opening up, restaurants and bars that they've been to. And that just allows us to connect clusters. So if I have, you've heard about the ones in the cities that have been closed because they weren't keeping their butts in the seat. They obviously were not following the rules and they had 60 cases at the whatever moon in St. Cloud, so they closed it down temporarily. So we asked where they've been, who they've been with, when they became symptomatic, what their symptoms were, contact, names, numbers, all of that. Then we put it all into the system and we follow up with the contacts. They have to give us permission to do so. If they say, no, I don't want you to educate, 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 and that's their right. That is their right to not tell us, but we really highly encourage them, encourage them to do it because that's, then we ask them to quarantine and watch for symptoms. and watch for symptoms. That answered your question.
Yep, I just wanted to kind of get that out there. And then the last, or one of the last questions I got for you is we're back with our survey responses. There was quite a few people that, um, associate the flu as being as serious as, as cold as that they're equally as dangerous to your health. Could you clarify that?
Um, we do have a lot of deaths in our elderly for the most part with seasonal flu. It's true that happens. It is not as contagious as COVID they're finding. COVID is so new, we don't know everything about it. It obviously doesn't have, seasonal flu usually shuts down when it gets warmer. COVID does, does not. We have not seen a decline, obviously. It's summer and, and it's all over the world. We're experiencing different seasons now and it's still very prevalent. So COVID, um, they're finding that it's permanent, some permanent damage to lungs. Flu doesn't do that for the most part. Um, we have lost a lot more people to COVID already in the four months than we do in a typical 12-month period of seasonal flu. Um, both of them do. It's worse for people with underlying conditions, so it's asthma, diabetes, obesity. Um, and both of them seem to be harder on those populations. Um, we do see spikes and hospitalizations with flu. Uh, and we're seeing that with COVID as well. So there's a couple similarities that way, but we just don't know enough about COVID. It's too new. We've only had three, four months. We don't know the damages to people's bodies. You're hearing stories that it's taking people months and months to recover. That they still are lethargic or can't get their breath or whatever it might be. And flu typically you have it for your few days and, and you're good, ready to go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else?
Other questions?
Have we had any positive cases in school-aged children in Kanabik County?
Yes.
What was the total number of cases we've had?
Thirty, is it 37 right now?
And what would be the percentage of school-aged kids?
Oh, shoot, I should have looked at this. Uh, well, five, I, I think we've had about, I can look it up, but five-ish school-aged children? Can you do the math for me?
Sure.
So fortunately, it's not been as many in that age group.
Okay, those did, did, and those young kids, are they recovered right away?
They seem to be.
Yeah.
Where, yeah, but there are others in the state that have that mild, it's a very severe.
MIS.
MY, MYS, MIS, yes. Um, so I, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Kathy?
Josh, if, um, with the five, if it's five of the 37, that's 13.5%.
But, but that's also going on summer number.
Right.
When there is not, you know, and, and there's been social distancing all summer and there, and there's been all this stuff, you know. So to me, it's kind of like, I don't know. I mean, I mean, we want to prove how low that is, but it's, it don't really mean much to me when, when you're talking about summer anyways and they haven't been together, so.
Right.
Not in the school setting anyway.
Well, what concerns me is when you're watching the news and the southern states have opened up that there's been large, large outbreaks. Uh, Georgia, 267 kids and staff members were sent home. And the hospitalization rates, uh, you know, it's not just the mortality, but it's the hospitalization rates too that are starting to climb. Do you have, do you have any of those stats for what Minnesota is? Because that has been really hard to try to.
Minnesota's been really hovering, um, lower than it had been at its peak in May. It's still below that. We had 320 hospitalizations today and 159 were in ICU. And, you know, that number really has been staying pretty flat. Um, and that's one of the triggers that the governor's watching. If that starts to go way up, he'll start determining things back again. That and the positivity rate. So the number of positives, you know, divided by the number of tests in a day. And that's been popping up over five, which we don't want.
Is there anything that you think the public should know or our community or us board members?
Well, I do think we're fortunate. I don't know that Georgia had much of a plan going back other than let's open up, let's go. Kids need to be in school.
Yep.
They sure do. But it's masks, it's distance, let's do everything we can that we know has an effect on that. I think you've gotten that from Minnesota. And I don't know if Georgia, I don't know if Georgia had that, but from what I'm seeing, there was not a mask in that crowded hallway.
I know that Minnesota High School League has shut down a lot of sports, but I don't think that there's, if we do go back to school, we still have gym, gym masks to, and recess and things like that, so.
And that's the internal planning of how do you do that outside as long as you absolutely can, you know, do that outside. We know that the infection rates outside are much lower than inside. You know, your air exchange, crank up, bring in that air from the outside as much as you can. If you can't open windows, open windows. Um, do activities that are more of those lifelong skills, you know, swing a golf club, play tennis. Um, do some of those activities versus the, where you're right next to each other, whether it's basketball or some other sport, that you're right in somebody's space.
Drinking fountains, are those.
They're recommending refillable bottles if you can. Um, yep, so, I mean, there is guidance for day near everything in there. Choir, band, um, spreading them out. Choir is one of the biggest ones because you're expelling, it's worse than band. Band, then not a lot of air comes actually out the end of the instrument, so it's different. But choir, can you sing through a mask? How far can you distance? Can you do it in your auditorium? You know, instead of the standard choir room, can you do that outside?
And to, to be reminded too, we opened up our, um, our playgrounds, our school grounds on June 8th. We opened up baseball on June 13th. Um, so we had a baseball program. We opened up football on that, the next week, so June 13th and seven, June 20th. And so, and we've also had some competitions between schools. Um, our neighbors, Rush City, Hinkley, Foley, Isle.
Onania.
Onania. And we, our football players did go to Duluth for, um, for a one-day camp that was very protected by the, by UMD staff. And at this point, even with those, the summer programs going, um, we, we only had two cases where we had to make some alterations, um, alternate decisions with the baseball program. So it was one, um, one event was canceled here and then, um, was canceled because it was another student in another school that, um, there was concern over, which ended up being negative. And then we had a concern here, um, in our school district with a couple. Um, and the, the, those were quarantined, never, um, positive by either the parent or by the student. And so we went through, you know, since, since June. So June, um, all of June, all of July, we're in August. And, you know, I give that credit to our coaches. Um, we had meetings of, you know, the protocols that we needed to be following and everybody's been so respectful of that. We've had people signing in when they come on our school grounds for, for any kind of games. Um, as spectators, we were taking their tests. We were taking tests of all of the athletes though, both our home team and the, um, the opposing team, just to make sure that we had as much safety precautions that we could put into place. And that's what we would continue to do here at OVAV, is put those precautions in place. Anything that we can, we can do that, uh, to take, to maintain and to increase the safety of our students and staff, that's our responsibility and we hold that in highest regard. I did want to share too, Kathy had mentioned, um, you know, this, the, the most recent one was on August 6th. And at that time, those were the numbers that I was going to present tonight. At that time, um, Kanabik County was at 6.87, Mille Lacs County was at 7.69, and Isanti County was at 4.36. So that was as of last Thursday. And we know that we're, we're experiencing a spike in, in Kanabik County. So that 6.87 did go up to 8.64 as Kathy shared today.
What happens if somebody doesn't want to participate in the, the contact tracing? And, you know, we've, or several people don't, and what happens with our, so if you can't identify where they're, you have like five people that are going through this and now I don't want to participate, don't want to answer the questions. I mean, how is the school gonna know?
It's protected HIPAA information, so if they say we can't, we're, we're still gonna get that person's name. And we may be able to discern the connection. Um, but if they tell us we can't contact anybody, certain situations, they don't have a choice. Um, and between the MDH, the school and us, I think we'll be able to get enough information to still make those valid decisions.
How long, uh, do you all go on the hospital, hospitalization rates, all the infection rates?
Usually, um, good three weeks. Incubation period is 14 days and then a lot of people don't go until the last minute. Three weeks.
And, and Kathy, the 14 days is incubation if testing positive?
Well, 14 days is the incubation period of the virus.
Of the virus, okay?
So you, you can shed the virus for that long too.
Okay, and so 14 days though, um, we would go into self-quarantine from the, when the test turns positive.
Actually from onset, the, the symptom onset date.
Okay, so the symptom, and that's done through the tracing then?
Mm-hmm.
The symptom onset date is 14 days. And then the 10 days of isolation?
Well, if they're ill and they have a positive test, again, it's 10 days from that symptom onset plus at least 24 hours of no fever. And their symptoms have to be improving. If their symptoms are not improving, that thought keeps ticking.
Who would monitor that? You?
Between, you know, again, the schools and us, between us all, I mean, but yeah, we have the, where we're tracking that information. Um, so, and then it's fever-free without any kind of, um, medication, that type thing. Everyone's gonna be just a little bit different and we will assist with that.
Right, and so that's a question too. Um, so I've heard that not everybody has a fever and some people have mild cold-like symptoms that make us positive. So where do you start that? Somebody starts with a sniffly nose and then gets a cough, so where, how do you start with that?
Well, and again, that, you're gonna, me as a parent, I know that my kid has allergies. I know that it's sniffly nose and this is standard for him at this time of year or whatever time. You're really gonna have to depend on the parents to know if it's out of the ordinary. Um, and otherwise, if you want to take that very strict approach of you, you sniffed or you sneezed, you're out of here. You know, that's kind of up to you, but at least with my own staff, I think, is that normal? Yes, I have allergies terrible and so then I take their word for it and I might have them masked up. And well, now we have to mask up, but even prior to the mask mandate, they were in the office, they were masking up if they had a sniffle.
But when you're talking about the isolation, the 10-day and the 14-day, how would you start that? Would you start from the day that they got the sniffles?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Even if it never amounted to much more?
Right.
You still start with that? Okay.
Yep.
Maura has a zero tolerance?
That's what they said on today's call, health masks.
So if a teacher, a little kid sneezing or you hear, no, they just send them home?
Again, that.
Discussion or nurse discussion?
To the nurse, I think you would work that out with the nurse and maybe that mean a phone call to the mom or guardian and just say, is this normal? And the nurses usually have an idea of which kids have some of those seasonal allergies or which kids are always prone to strep throat or that type of thing.
As far as the temperatures being taken, um, from our survey from the parents, um, it was important to them, 63.4% of the families said they want to make sure that the temperatures are being taken of our staff that are, you know, having contact with their children. And then it was 58.7% of our families that said that they, but believe that it was very important that their children's temperatures were taken or students' temperatures were taken as they were coming into school. And I, I think we're, um, well, I, I want to say that we believe we can take the temperatures of our students in a very efficient orderly way where that's, that will be happening. And our staff are already doing that, have been doing it all summer and they, well, since last March. And they will continue to do that, um, as they enter the building. And so that's already been, been, you know, decided by the advisory committee, um, with their, um, report to you tonight as board members, that that would be in place.
Does a family, like if a kid, um, you have multiple children, the whole house gets quarantined, correct?
If there's a positive case, unless, I mean, there's, it depends on, you know, do they share a bedroom? Do they, if, if you have like a teenager and a toddler and they never spend any time together because the teenager's annoyed by that child and they, you know, you know what I mean? Um, it may not have to be. Uh, it, and in Maura, there's a lot of teachers that both teach and they have kids. And so if one parent can, if the child gets sick and one parent can pretty much isolate and take care of that child and they can sleep in separate bedrooms and have a separate bathroom and may not have to. So it's very situational. And I, I, it holds up for a non-answer, but again, it's, it's too hard.
It's like everything going through this thing, you don't know, you don't know the exact.
And I can tell you something now and it, you know, the science will show something else tomorrow, so.
I think a lot of these questions can be answered online if you really have, you know, you can look it up and see what other schools are doing. I have done it all the time, but you know, this Georgia thing, I look, what happened there? You know, and you know what's happening in Mille Lacs, you can find that out.
True, but then we would have had different results. I think we would have had different comments on our surveys and stuff, so.
Well, that's true, but that's, you know, we, we can only do what we can do.
Right.
All right, any other comments for, or anything with Kathy? Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it. I look forward to working with you.
We'll be in touch.
We'll be in touch, you bet.
Thank you.
Appreciate that partnership.
You're welcome.
All right, let's move on to action item six, school calendar adjustment. Uh, three teacher-staff development days have had to change. I happen to be at that meeting, but I'll let Kathy elaborate on that.
In order for us to, um, be as prepared as we possibly can for our new school year coming upon us, um, it was suggested, um, that we bring three of our staff development days during the regular school year and front-load them. And so we're moving those to the, the beginning and it's going to be the 25th, 26th, and 27th of August in addition to our regular 31st, 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. That, um, that we can adequately, not adequately, we can very well prepare our staff for the, the learning that we're going to be embarking on. And so with that then, it's the, um, I believe it's the October 5th, the December 7th, and the May 3rd, um, staff development days that are going to be swapped out during the year. And we made sure to, you know, that those were strategic, um, decisions on those particular days because they wouldn't have as much of an impact on when we need to have teachers here, um, for, for the, for the planning. And they're spaced out enough, so we're still going to have that content, that, the, um, contact with our staff during the school, the course of the school year as well. So we're asking the board to please allow that change in the, um, the school calendar for our teaching staff or professional development and also for, um, preparation for our learning plans.
And that was agreed to by both the union's laws administration. Is that correct, Kathy?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to that effect. Motion by Reno Gunderson. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Judged by Casey Hines. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. That's right, there's always a little play. All right, the 20, we'll go to number seven, 2020, 2020, 2021, Beginning of School Year Plan. Kathy?
What I would like to, um, share with you and because, um, because we want to keep the, our guests up on the screen. This is, this is that basically is. This is, this is that, basically it's the, the information that comes to us from the state. And this was part of the presentation that was given to, um, to our, our working committee of over thirty-some people, um, last week. So it's basically this information from the state, but put into a, a slide. And what I want to point out to you is if that number, if our number of our counties of, um, that, the rate, the case rate per population of the counties is between zero to less than ten, the recommendation from our health, um, both county and from the Minnesota Department of Health, would be in-person learning for all students. Now, if that number goes between ten, but it's less than twenty, then it remains as a, um, guidance from the state and county for in-person learning for our elementary students. Still keep our elementary students here in distant, or in-person learning, but it would be a hybrid learning model for the secondary students. If the number goes to twenty but less than thirty, then the suggestion, the guidance is hybrid learning for all students. So that hybrid learning then means fifty percent capacity. Not fifty percent of our kids here, but fifty percent capacity of the different spaces that the students and staff would be in during the course of the, of the year. And if it happens to go to that thirty to less than fifty, then it's hybrid learning for our elementary students and all distance learning for the secondary students. And if our number ends up more than fifty, then it is to be, um, determined that we all go back to distance learning. So, um, having, having said that, um, we really believe with the, the information that we received from all three counties and this information being from Kanabik County that was presented last week, that, um, we believe the recommendation from our team that's been working here at school for the months of, of July and half of June and July and into August, that we recommend in-person, um, teaching and learning for our students.
Okay.
And I do, I want, I want you to be reassured, even, even with Trisha's, um, Trisha's email and wanting to share, um, how much work and what a, a huge commitment of time and how seriously all of our staff are taking this. We have wonderful plans in place. And, and I know, I want, um, Alicia to talk with us in a, in just a second also, um, for her to, to share some of the new things that we're going to do because we believe that our parents want to see what's going to happen with their children. And we believe, just as Kathy Bersky.